Welcome to the March 4th, 2013 City of Waukegan City Council Meeting. Roll call please, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman May. Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moizio.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsome. Alderman Tempest.
We have a quorum, thank you, please rise for the moment of silence. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, got some quick announcements about some events going on around Waukegan. First, we have the Black Abolition Movement for the Mind is having an event Saturday, March 23rd, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Waukegan Park Place at 414 South Lewis Avenue, and that's in Waukegan. And that is the, the title is "Why Pull the Trigger? An Open-Mic Poetry Showcase: Raising Funds for BAM's Anubis Bureal Right Fund to Assist the Families of Innocent Victims of Gun Violence in the Costly Burden of Bearing Their Youth or Loved Ones." Let's see, next we have Waukegan Public Library and Hinkston Park Branch. I have a family flyer, they're having a variety of education-related classes, including walk-in reading, math, and computer help on Wednesdays from 10:30 to 12:30, Thursdays 10:00 to 12:00, job search and resume help lab, March 27th, 10:30 to 12:30, and a variety of other opportunities. You can learn a bit, a little bit more about this from the Waukegan Public Library website. I was at a nice little event today over at the library, and they're inviting everybody to come celebrate Youth Art Month. The 2013 Waukegan District Elementary Art Show is running from March 4th until April 1st. I was extremely impressed with the quality of the artwork that I saw there today. Some of these young folks have an amazing eye and amazing, amazing hands at being able to put that all down on paper, so I think it's worth everybody going over and taking a look. Let's see, at the library, we have the Lunch and Learn. Join them for lunch while you learn how to use the latest personal devices to download free books, music, apps, and movies from the library. They're even providing dessert, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's a variety of different technical devices they'll be focusing on, you can learn more about that from the library website. The Waukegan Yacht Club is having the Waukegan Sail and Power Squadron March Events. There's a Northern Illinois Boat Show, oh, I'm sorry, that's already been held. Tuesday seminars at the Waukegan Yacht Club, "How to Commission Your Engine," which must be, I'm not sure what that means. Piloting Class at the Brunswick Headquarters, District 20 Pizza Party in Rockford, and there's a variety of other things go on the Waukegan Yacht Club website, you'll learn a little bit more. Waukegan Park District, The Everyday Woman, The Mature Woman Surviving and Thriving, Women 55 and Over, again, that'd be on the Waukegan Park District website. Vista Health is having a program related to sports-related knee injury seminar, that is March 6th on Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. over at the Waukegan Park District Fieldhouse, Sports and Fitness Center at 800 Baldwin Avenue in Waukegan. Jabapalooza, Lake County Job Resource and Training Fair for ages 15 to 21, Thursday, March 7th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the College of Lake County in Graves Lake. Might be a little difficult getting out there with the weather we have coming, but if you're interested, that's, that's being held. Bring on the Brass, Saturday, March 9th, 2013, 11:00 a.m. at the Waukegan High School Trap Auditorium. That is being put on by the Waukegan Symphony Orchestra and the Young People, it is the Young People's Concert. Waukegan Concert Chorus, a Centennial Celebration of Benjamin Britten, March 10th, at 4:00 p.m. at the First Presbyterian Church of Waukegan, 122 North Martin Luther King Jr. Avenue. Dandelion Gallery en route, we have a couple of artists' work that will be, be up there as they commemorate the Dandelion Gallery's two-year anniversary, Saturday, March 16th, from 5:00 to 9:00. The 12th Annual Wares Cup Charity Basketball Game, that's our Waukegan Police Department versus the Waukegan Fire Department, Saturday, March 16th at 6:00 p.m. in the main gym, I'm assuming that, yeah, at what used to be known as East Campus, 1011 Washington Street, it's called the Dog Pound as well. Family First Center of Lake County Basketball Tournament, March 23rd, 2013, at the Waukegan Fieldhouse, again, at 800 Baldwin Avenue. The entry fee is $250 per team, three-game guarantee, pool play format, Division Adults, High School, Junior High School. Then, April 21st, and we've announced this before, but we want everybody to be aware of it, Cruzar de la, Cruzar La Cara de la Luna, which is to Cross the Face of the Moon, the world's first mariachi opera sung in Spanish with projected English text, Sunday, April 21st, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. at the Genesee Theater. It's quite an honor, actually, to have Lyric Opera here in Waukegan putting on an event like this, if Lyric Opera is about as big as you get in the arts game, so we're very happy to have them here, and our thanks to all of the, of the volunteers who have been helping to put this on, and our own David Motley. That concludes, let's see, oh, I should also ask the aldermen, and it just has to be very informal, Chicago Fire, the television series, has asked permission to film in Waukegan again. Unfortunately, the notice was very short, and they'd like to be here this week. We weren't able to get this on the agenda, but if I don't hear any concerns or issues about it, I will go forward with giving them permission to film. Yes, Alderman Tempest?
Waukegan Aldermen, do they give us anything for insurance?
Well, you know, to be honest with you, they do pay for our police and fire that are required to be there, and they eat in our restaurants.
Fine, that's great.
So, we're nice, nice to have the little bump, absolutely. So, hearing no other concerns, we will move that forward, and we're glad to have Chicago Fire back in Waukegan, they filmed two episodes here, I believe it was late last fall, if I remember correctly, and...
Can you get the credits, Your Honor, at all?
I'm sorry, who?
Can you get some of the credits? I was looking for...
I, I can't answer that, Sam, I really don't know, I'll find out for you and let you know.
I think they do, they mention our name.
Okay. But it's great to have them here, obviously, you know, we've had a lot of film work done in Waukegan, because we work well with the, the production companies, and we, we welcome them with open arms, so it's, it's wonderful to have them back. Next, we have audience time. First up is Violet Ricker. Oh, excuse me, real quick, I apologize, I missed this somehow. Waukegan Public Library is trading food for fines during the entire month of March, the library will take $1 off overdue fines for each non-perishable item that patrons donate to a local food pantry, and patrons should bring donations to the customer service desk where staff will collect the items and adjust their fines. All donations go to Cool Ministries Food Pantry in Waukegan located on Water Street. Violet, I apologize.
That's fine, thank you. My name is Violet Ricker, I live at 203 Water Street, and I'm also the Director of Waukegan Main Street, which is our downtown development nonprofit organization. Just a couple of quick announcements, Waukegan Main Street is actually hiring right now, we're looking for a 20-hour-a-week assistant to help us with our office management and some of the events that we do, so if you're interested in that job, the full posting for that is on our website at waukegammainstreet.org, or you can talk to me afterward and I'd be happy to give you the information. I also want to invite everybody to Art Walk on Saturday, the 16th, this, believe it or not, is the two-year anniversary of the monthly Art Walks, as well as the grand opening of Dinosaur Studio and Dandelion Gallery, so there's a lot to celebrate that day, and you can check out artwalk.com, W-A-U-K, for more information about that. And last but not least, we are expecting a whole bunch of snow tomorrow, and so, Waukegan Main Street is organizing a downtown shoveling party, and so if anybody has the day off school or wants to come out and help us volunteer, we're meeting at the corner of Genesee and Washington Street at 1:00, so if you can bring a shovel or a snow blower and come down and help us out, we'll be meeting, we're gonna shovel for about two hours, and then we're gonna go to Joplin's Java for coffee, so there'll be free coffee and hot chocolate for anybody who helps shovel, and I just got a note, too, that 17 North is gonna be offering half-price food for anybody who helps shovel, so please come out and support our restaurants and help us keep our streets clear tomorrow, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Violet. Next, Mr. Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. This is myself and some of the members of BAM here, and Mayor, you know, I've been trying to teach our young people to come out, stand up, and just get them involved in city government, and teaching them, being able to speak up for themselves as well, and I just wanted to mention to you that, you know, there was a couple occasions that we came out, the first couple occasions, that this young man right here, Big D, we call him, his name is Darian, and, you know, I've been teaching him the difference between being able to recognize inequality and justice and everything, and when, and I let him know that you have to challenge that from the smallest to the largest level. So, one of the things that he had noticed when we came the first time, two times, he says, well, Brother Blanks, he said, "I noticed that when the mayor was giving out awards, you know, we, everybody was able to applaud in recog, you know, in recognition of the people that was getting the awards." He said, however, he said that, "But when I was up speaking for them, addressing some of the issues," he noticed that on two occasions, the last two times he came, that soon as they got ready to applaud, after they applauded for the people that was getting awards, there was nothing said, but he noticed that when they got ready to applaud, based on some of the issues that I was addressing for them, he says that on a couple of times, two times you shift them to be quiet. Now, he got, they, they got offended, that's why they're up here today, and, you know, and I don't know if it was oversight on your part, but it's hard enough to get our young people to come out, to really get them involved in the government, city government, and the issues that are going on, and I, so I've been encouraging them to come out, and so, I told them that, you know, I'm telling them maybe it wasn't intentional, but I don't know that if there's any policies in the books to say when you can, or when you can't applaud, or if you should or shouldn't, but I noticed when they did applaud, they was not disrupting, it was not being disrupted, it was, it was at a very convenient time in between after I had gotten through speaking. So, they just kind of felt that at that particular time that they had noticed what we consider as inequality, because if it's inequality, if, as they said, if the, they can clap when other people are receiving awards, then when somebody is addressing issues on their part, they should be able to equally applaud just as well. So, and, you know, that's, that's some of the things that, you know, that I'm trying to address, because during election time, one of the problems that we've been having, too often, there's been too much political posturing or symbolism with no real substance of genuine intentions to address the issues, and in this case, what we're speaking of is hypocrisy or inequality. And so, I'm just hoping that, you know, as our young people continue to come down here, and I encourage them to come out, the last thing we want is for them to be discouraged, and I would like to see that if we do things, just make sure we're gonna do something that's gonna encourage them to come down and not be discouraged. So, I just wanted to address that, and do any of y'all, any of y'all have anything you want to say? Okay, so I think everybody's, you know, pleased with that, so just please, if you can, just be mindful of that, if you want to, extend them an apology or something like that, that would be good, because I want these young people to continue to come out and to be involved in their government and what's going on, and not feel like they're slighting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blanks. Next, well, that's it, that's the public comments for the evening, thank you very much for everybody coming down. We have the minutes before us, I'd like a motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Conkin, to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2013, regular meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you. We don't have anything tonight in resolutions and proclamations, Elizabeth Sterns was not able to attend tonight for family reasons, so she is going to make our next meeting to make her presentation in regards to the library's position as a Services National Medal, Library Services National Medal finalist. Committee reports and motions, first up is the Judiciary Committee, report, and Vice Chair Alderman Moizio.
Thank you, Your Honor, we have one item on the agenda, item eight, approval of the MAP Amendment and Ordinance as presented rezoning, zoning calendar 2385, the property at 1800 Longview Road from B2 Community Shopping to R6 General Residence, and I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Moizio, we have a second by Alderman Valco, do we have any comments or questions?
I'll just tell everybody this is about, it's that old building there on Longview, it's been a binding factory, it's been a, not a factory, it's been a binding place, it's been a, the fitness studio at one time, it's been, it's been everything, and it's gonna now be inhabited by a church, which we all thought was a good thing. We did have a question about parking, and they have secured a letter from Sunset Bowl that's gonna allow them to use their parking lot as a place to park, so there won't be any problem with parking, so this passed the Judiciary Committee unanimous.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
I'll vote aye for, for the Alderman of the ward on this, I mean, I'm not, you know, too crazy about changing a business zoning to a, to the R6 General Residence, but, you know, but I'll go with the Alderman on that.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Ayes have it, thank you. That's, that concludes, that concludes the committee's business for this evening, next is Alderman Conkin and the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor, we had one item tonight, the Public Safety Committee meeting was held at 6:30 this evening, just before the council. Item A is to accept a low quote for the purchase of fitness equipment from Fitness Factory Outlet, 1395 Townline Road, Midline, Illinois, 60060, for $29,998.48. Funding for this project is taken from the Narcotics Asset Forfeiture Fund, budget code number 296-62962482, I so move.
We have the motion by Alderman Conkin, seconded by Alderman Valco, do we have any comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. Aye.
Ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you, we have, I just have one other thing I'd like to mention, since we didn't have anything to bring before the council last month, we had one discussion, I'm in the Waukegan Fire Department, received a check from Contact Fire Alarm Company, the city's alarm, alarm board contractor totaling $54,604.78, and those funds have been deposited in the appropriate city line, that was from last month, thank you very much, I'm done.
Thank you, Alderman Conkin. If, in case anybody's wondering about the equipment, I think maybe just a quick explanation, our officers have been working out in a old trailer, often a lot back off of our, in one of our parking areas for years, it's not the healthiest environment, it's not the newest of equipment, and we were able to find space for them downstairs so they'd be able to work out in the building, much more comfortable, comfortable environment, and with newer equipment, so we're very glad to be able to kind of move this along, this has been a topic of discussion for years.
Yes, Your Honor, and they have salvaged everything they could from the old trailer, so they aren't, you know, this is just additional equipment that they're buying, and it doesn't come out of any of the city's funds, it's one of the, the buying of fitness equipment for officers is one of the uses for the drug control forfeiture monies, narcotics asset forfeitures, so everything is, you know, a plus-plus for the city.
Good, that's great, we're glad to have it, so, so approved. We have no old business, no reports and communications, under new business and recommended actions by Corporation Council, item A, approval of payroll, payroll dated February 28th, 2012, in the amount of $1,314,440.40. Motion by Alderman Valco, seconded by Alderman Moizio, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to record a show that I vote aye, but I vote against the $8,000 a month for the lobbyists that we have in Springfield.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Item B, approval of bills dated March 4th, 2013, in the amount of $801,077.50. Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Valco, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Ayes have it, thank you. Under ordinances and resolutions, item A, could I ask, whose, whose district is this in, 11, who's ward?
That would be mine or Eadie's, 1123 North.
1123 North.
Is it north of Grand Avenue? North of Grand Avenue, east or west side? No, it doesn't matter anymore, it's Eadie's.
It's Eadie's Ward.
Okay, got it. We have the resolution, approve the purchase of 1123 North Lewis Avenue pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, as the closest Alderman, I'd take the motion by Alderman Moizio, seconded by Alderman Tempest, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. Aye.
Ayes have it, whose property is the next one in?
Lisa Mays.
Lisa's, okay.
I'll, I'll make the motion.
You got it. Motion by Alderman Tempest, seconded by Alderman Beedling, to approve the purchase of 107 Gallagher Road pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, roll call, please.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moizio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
I'd like to vote aye, but I'd like to comment if I may, I want to commend Yezel Robbins for this program that he's instituted, buying some homes that are in stabilized neighborhoods, and rather let them going down the tubes, he's, he's bought them, fixed them up, and we resell, and basically, we're not losing money, but he is stabilizing the neighborhood, and that's what the fund is supposed to do, so I commend him, Your Honor.
Thank you, yeah, he does a great job.
Yes, he does.
And he's very, been very dedicated to this for as long as I can remember knowing him anyway, so we're happy to have that. So, the ayes have it, we do not have an executive session this evening, so Alderman's time, and then we will conclude the meeting.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, I'd like to briefly address the issue this evening about getting to know your neighbors, some neighborhoods have Neighborhood Watch, most do not. It's very important for residents to know who lives on either side of them, and then across the street. Introduce yourself, especially if the residents are elderly and need a helping hand. Get to know what hours they work and who else is in the house. Let them know that you will look out for the house when they go on vacation, or that if you're just gone overnight. I'm very fortunate, as I've been in my home for over 16 years, and know pretty well most of the people on my street. We all know about vacations, weddings, births, and retirements. I'm bringing this up this evening as I had a knee replacement surgery about a month ago. I got home from the hospital, and within a couple of days, we got the first big nine-incher. I was surprised that in the afternoon, one set of neighbors were snowblowing my walk in driveway, and then in the evening, another set of neighbors did the walk in the drive again. My thanks go out to Joe and Sandy, Dick and Jan, Bill and Judy, Pat and Kay, you saved this old man. I'm speaking on this issue this evening because we are again supposed to get anywhere from six to 10 inches of snow from 3:00 a.m. tomorrow until midnight on Wednesday. Please check on that elderly resident who lives a couple of doors down from you, do their walk, or see if you can assist them in doing some grocery shopping as they will not be able to get out. If nothing else, just see if they're okay. I received a couple of emails and calls on how some of the streets still had snow on them after the first evening. Please know that there are no plows out in the evening anymore because of the cutbacks, which total about 45% in Public Works, starts up again at about 5:00 in the morning, that's if they're working all night. The drivers and crews work all day and into the evening, and then go home and get some rest before they start again. There are no backup drivers to keep the plows going. On that note, thanks to Public Works employees for their hard work on the first nine-incher, and then the foot that we got later. I'm done, sir.
Alderman Rivera.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, I concur with Alderman Tempest on, in regards to the, the NSP Neighborhood Stabilization Program, Yezel's doing a great job, I, matter of fact, I met with him today to talk about the program, and I'll tell you, that is a wonderful program that's addressing, you know, these issues of, you know, foreclosures and vacant homes, so it, the program is definitely, definitely working, it's well worth it. And, and I also concur with Alderman Valco, and I'm glad you're back, Alderman Valco, from your surgery, hope you're feeling better, and I definitely want to make sure that, check on your neighbors, you're absolutely right, because we have a lot of senior citizens, I have some in my ward, and, you know, and I got a call the last time to go help him out with his mailbox, you know, some of them can't even get to their mailbox, so, you know, definitely help each other out, and it's really not much, as long as you just grab a shovel and open a path to the mailbox, they're gonna be fine, so. But I also ask, especially in my ward where I have some, you know, dirty streets and cul-de-sacs, you know, if, if you can avoid parking out on, on the streets, you know, if you can park in your driveway, you know, do so, so that way the plows can get through and, and they can take care of their business. But other than that, just be careful, if you don't need to go anywhere tomorrow, stay home, safer to be home and avoid accidents, thank you.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yeah, I, I'd want to echo the, the parking on the streets, everybody, it is very critical for those who have driveways, we understand that moving your vehicles is, is inconvenienced for you, but it causes much difficulty for our Public Works Department to efficiently and effectively clean our streets. Second, Danny, maybe you could speak to this, I apologize, I say Danny respectfully, but it should be Chief, well, Chief Crayhouse, if you could speak to this, I know, I was riding through my ward, and there was a couple of cars that hadn't been moved in three or four days, what is our process, and for these vehicles who've been sitting there, Public Works have to go around and around, even after a couple of days, trying to push the snow back to the curb, are we having our supervisor or our patrol division tag some of these vehicles, necessary tow some of these cars so they don't impede that cleanup process?
Yes, that's exactly, however, if there is, there's something against the vehicle that is there, not moved or abandoned, usually it's snowbound, definitely give us a call and we'll tag it, 24 hours, we'll, we'll come to a situation where the safety aspect in a way that we can love, no, we're just moving.
Okay, that's one.
The thing is, make sure we, we're clear, so we have the ability to, for that, we're gonna move anywhere we need.
So, that's, just so we're clear, if these vehicles are not removed in a timely fashion, we, we will have the option of moving them for ourselves, at the owner's expense, okay, just want to make that clear. Second, you know, I noticed that the Culture Hotel has been, I'm assuming, is somewhat done in, in the latter stages. I've warned this before, I understand that we have invested some of our dollars into this project, well over $2 million, if I'm not mistaken, if not more, I was somewhat disturbed, though, when I noticed the sign that says apartment, I think it says for rent or being rented, maybe I'm wrong, or maybe somebody can help me out with this, but I thought that they had existing individuals ready to go into, into those apartments, who are aspiring artists from our original area. Now, if that sign is out there, that mean that sign is out there to invite people in? The understanding was this was supposed to be for aspiring artists, that was the understanding I had. Now, that sign, that's an invitation, when you get an invitation, and don't forget, this is subsidized housing, that's the understanding I have. Now, i, i, if, if that invitation is there, I need for, make sure someone from the city makes it very, very, very clear that we're not just asking for anyone to go there when we had a specific objective for that particular project. Maybe someone can speak to it, right now, I'm just going off what I saw, thank you.
Alderman Conkin.
Along with everyone else, I'd also like to reiterate, being careful while, especially around schools, a lot of snow, so around the schools, a lot of kids might be walking in the street, please take your time. in the street, please take your time, uh, drive safely, let the kids get to school safely. Also, before we meet again, it's gonna be St. Patrick's Day, it's a day for big celebration, and, uh, well, I don't know if it's a day for it, but it's a day that it happens. And, uh, so I want everybody just to be responsible, think about what you're doing. And finally, I'd just also like to offer my condolences to the family of Alderman Pete Lantin. He passed away last week, I believe, and, uh, he was an Alderman for Waukegan, I believe, fifth ward for three terms, so I'd just like to offer my condolences. Thank you.
Alderman Moiseo.
Uh, again, I echo Alderman Conkin's condolences to Pete Lantin's family. Uh, Alderman Cunningham, I, I think, um, you have to have, there's a criteria you have to pass to, uh, be able to rent at that building, I think you do have, there's some, some criteria, part of it's income, part of it's you have to be an artist, so there is, it's just not for anybody, there are some criteria, that's the whole reason art space gets the money that they get from the state, um, and other, and I don't think, they get any federal money, I don't think, they might have, I don't know. But there are criteria they have to have, they just can't, somebody just can't walk off the street and say, "I wanna rent an apartment." I'm pretty sure of that, but Noel, could you get us that information? I'm almost positive that's how it works, you have, there's a set of criteria that's pretty stringent on who can, who can rent and who can live there. Um, that's it.
Alderman Bedling.
I'm gonna enjoy the weather. I suggest everyone get out in the weather, enjoy the snow, be grateful you're alive, put a shovel in your car, put a bag of salt in your car, help your neighbors shovel, help anyone out that you can. I intend to try to help, uh, Violet Rickards' effort, effort downtown, 'cause I have no, nothing better to do. As far as what Alderman Velco said about getting to know your neighbors, we used to know our neighbors. I grew up in North Chicago, and, uh, I virtually knew everybody in four or five block radius, you could name off each house where everybody lived. We don't do that anymore, we got into a transitional sort of, or transient way of life with easy credit, and nobody stuck around anymore. One thing I noticed when I drive through the ward, and I could be wrong, Waukegan looks like a haven for, uh, burglars during the daytime. I drive down street after street after street, everybody's shades or curtains are pulled, it looks like nobody's home, they're closed on the side of the home, what easier way for a burglar, you know, you look, nobody even sees anyone walking down the street, you could walk up somebody's driveway, they very well could be home, but since their shades are all pulled, they don't see anybody walking up their neighbor's, neighbor's driveway. Chief, would it make any difference to anyone if, even if they weren't home, to leave their, their curtains open during the day, so it appears that at least somebody's, there's some activity in there?
I, I believe the idea, the idea of having people leave, be it a deterrent that, uh, it'd be a deterrent for the work, that somebody gets home, it does activate it all. The idea of that, having someone, if the Alderman stays, and, like, neighbors, someone with neighbors, and looking out for one another, something as simple as leaving the shade open, be looking out the window, see who's coming, going, it'd make a difference, the eyes, we can't be there, please, everywhere. The eyes communicate, believe, that, that helps in, in hurting, threatening any consulting practices that happen.
I didn't wanna give anybody any bad advice, but in my opinion, it, it seems a burglar, potential burglar walking down the street would be more worried about an open window if somebody's watching or can identify him. Open up the shades and curtains in your house first thing in the morning when you get up. I leave mine open till late in the evening quite often, midnight, 1:00 in the morning, I don't care. Who cares if you can see inside your house? Enjoy the weather. I encourage everyone to come downtown, we're gonna have a big party down there, Violet Rickers' behest, and, uh, we'll all have a good time. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Alderman Tempest.
Hey! I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You've witnessed it, folks, an attempt to deprive the Alderman of his right to speak here before us tonight, it's on camera.
I apologize. I do have the floor now, I should make you sit there for quite a.
Oh, no, please, don't do that to me, though.
No, I won't do that to you. I just wanna talk about, some of them, what I'm talking about, sidewalk shoveling. In the 1,400 block of Hickory where I live, we're quite fortunate, we, first one to snowblow, the whole plot gets done, on both sides. They chip in and make sure, what is, and then we even make a path for this postman to cut through the yards with a shovel path from, to deliver the mail. And getting to know your neighbors, that is important, and I can say in my block, we all know each other, and it's so important, but it takes a special effort from someone to everybody to know everybody, and we really need to, to do that. And we've all been speaking on it, so it's something that we're gonna have to work on. And one, one way of doing it, I think the chief is really trying to push this, it's a neighborhood watch, neighbors getting together, looking out for each other. I know my neighbor, good old Sid, lived next to him, he passed on, but I had his house key, he had my key, he left on vacation, he brought the mail in, I got another gal down the street that walks her dog, all the time when I go on vacation now, she's got my house key, she waters the plants, brings the mail in, I mean, that's neighbors looking out for each other. And we haven't had any problem in our block, you know, and we're gonna have it either, you know, I hope we don't have any, because, Chief, someone breaks in my house, they're not coming out. They're not coming out, believe me. Either I'm coming out in a casket, or they are, because, don't pick on my house, I'm sorry, I have the right to defend my house, and I'm old enough that I don't care what happens to me. Uh, I mean it, I'm sincere when I say that, and you can record that and use it against me if I do it. Uh, I mean, I made it, I, I've had it. Parking on the streets at night, I look at our poor city employees, I, over on Stewart Avenue, he had three inches on each side to be able to get through. How he got the plow through, they complained, they, the street wasn't plowable, couldn't get a plow hardly down there with the parked cars. There's gonna have to be a, a day of reckoning when we see up to four inches of snow, or three inches of snow, all the cars in the city gotta be off the street. There's got to be a way, there has to be a way to, to solve this problem. It's just, it, it just adds to the problem of plowing. You come, the big pile of snow in the middle of the street, 'cause you have to go around, the job doesn't get done right, takes more time to do it, uh, we're, we're gonna have to work on that somehow, and I've been here long enough, it should've been solved, I'm sorry, I haven't solved it yet, but I'm gonna work on it. I've kinda dedicated the next snowstorm to get out there and go knock on their door and tell them to move their car. With that, we just had a primary election, my good friend Sam didn't make it, but he's still on this city council, Conkin didn't make it, but he's still on this city council, working for a better Waukegan, and that's what carried, and Sam ran a very nice, clean campaign, and, uh, Sam, I'm proud of you, he showed up, Afro-American, ran very, very strong, beat the state senator, by the way, which was quite an accomplishment, a lot of money that he put in the campaign. Uh, but again, if I can speak to Terry. The voters told Terry, "Terry, we love you as a state senator, we need you to help the city of Waukegan, please continue, but Waukegan needs a full-time mayor, somebody that's dedicated to this job." And we have people running in the finals, we have Mayor Sabanja running, City Clerk Motley running, and Susan Figueroa running, so we have some talented people running that's gonna be able to run the city, and I'm pledged to support whoever wins the election, I wanna work with them to have a better Waukegan, and that's what we all need to do, work for a better Waukegan, and that's what really counts here. As you get older, you really realize the importance of the community that you live in, and the value that it has in your life, and how it's, what it's done for you, and you wanna give back, and I think very sincerely on that. Waukegan has real potential to really turn around now, and I really believe we're turning the corner. We can be a great community again, but we have to do it together, we're diversified cities, but through diversity, we're stronger, we're stronger. In Sam's campaign, I met a lot of friends that I hadn't seen for years through high school, uh, you know? So, again, there, we're, we're looking for a better Waukegan, whoever wins, good luck to all of you that are running, uh, we just hope that we can get this city going, I think we're on the right path. Thank you.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Your Honor, before you do that, uh, I don't know if everyone knew, but Jerome Whitehead's uncle, uh, Mr. Earl Whitehead, passed, um, a couple, a week ago in this, uh, home going, just wanted to mention that out, you know, Mr. The Whitehead family was real big in Waukegan, so.
Literally.